Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to a special council meeting of the Jackson City Council today, August 22, 2024, at 3:00 PM here at City Hall. We have one item on the agenda today, and it is the presentation of the FY 2022 Audit Report by our auditor, who is here with us today, Mr. Scott Hodges. And so with that, colleagues, are there any introductions or comments before we begin? If not, Mr. Hodges, I'm going to ask you to come forward and just work your magic. Present us the audit. Thank you.
All right. I believe everybody has a copy there. I'm going to just hit some high points in here. But if anybody wants to talk about anything further, just stop me at any time if I skip past what you want to talk about. This is the audit report for the fiscal year ended 2022, so it's about a year and a half behind. Looking at the page numbers at the bottom of the pages, on page number two, this is our independent auditor's report. And in the section there on the summary of opinions, you'll note that the aggregate discreetly presented component units has an adverse opinion, and that's because the Convention Center Commission financial information was not available for fiscal year '22, and so that's not included in here, and so that's why the discreetly presented component units has an adverse opinion. Because that's with the-
Just a minute. Colleagues, do you know where he is?
Page number two at the bottom, looking at the page numbers on the bottom of the page.
It's-
No, just, no, no, page number two.
It's the second yellow, manila-
Divider page, yeah.
And it's the page that has their letterhead at the top, and so that's where we are. Thank you. Excuse me.
Yeah, but just wanted to point that out because that is unusual. There is a dispute with the previous management company for the Convention Center, and so that information was not available for them. Flipping through to page number 26 and 27, looking at the Water Sewer Fund and the Sanitation Fund, I know that's a hot topic. And if you look down at the bottom of page 26, there's an income loss before transfers in the Water Sewer Fund of a negative $46 million, and in the Sanitation Fund, income loss before transfers, a negative $8 million. So both of those had substantial losses, and part of that was funded by transfers from other funds. Repeat, yeah. Bottom of page 26, there's a line called income loss before transfers. It's about the fifth line up from the bottom. That Water Sewer Fund has a negative $46 million, so that's a loss of $46 million. And that second column, the Sanitation Fund, has a negative $8 million loss. And the next page, page 27, is a cash flow statement for those funds. Up at the top is the cash flow from operations. So this is your normal collections from customers and payments for services and supplies. The net of that is a positive $8 million for the Water Sewer Fund, so there was actually positive cash flow from operations for the Water Sewer Fund. But with that $8 million positive cash flow from operations, debt service payments of $23 million had to be paid, and so the operating income was not enough to cover the debt payments. And that was funded by transfers from other funds. So you actually have a negative, third line from the bottom there, negative cash flow overall for the Water Sewer Fund of $7 million. So that's actually $7 million cash that went out the door in excess of what came in the door.
Thank you.
Now, the Sanitation Fund, looking up at the top again, from cash from operations, is a negative $69 million. And so that was close to a break even for the Sanitation Fund. There were actually transfers in of about 4.9 million from other funds, and so that actually showed as an increase in cash at the end of the year. So you ended up with $5 million cash in the Sanitation Fund. Now, the reason for that excess cash in the Sanitation Fund was because the garbage collection, if you remember back at that time, was not being paid. The service charges for garbage collection, that was in accounts payable, and so that was not paid until after the end of the year. So that's why there was an excess of cash on hand. Flipping over to page 108, the general fund budget to actual. 108, about the middle of the report. I'm skipping over quite a lot, but if I went over every page, we'd be here all night. So this is a comparison of the original budget, the final budget, the actual amounts, and the variance between the final budget and the actual amounts. So that last column on the right is the variance difference between the final budget and the actual amounts. So looking about the middle of page 108 there, the total revenue from all sources and beginning fund balance, that actual amount was $144 million. The budget was $127 million. So there's an excess there of $16 million over the budgeted amount. And the majority of that is the beginning fund balance, because the beginning fund balance was budgeted at $5 million, but was actually $19 million. And so that $14 million of that difference is related to the beginning fund balance. And the other amounts is related to the state fire protection funds. Nothing was budgeted, but $2 million was received, and the sales tax was actually about $1 million more than budgeted. So those are the big fluctuations there in the revenue for the general fund. On the expense side, if you look on page 110, there's a total general fund expenditures and ending fund balance there around the middle of the page. Again, $127 million budgeted, and the actual was $144 million, but that includes the ending fund balance of $25.8 million. So the actual expenditures were $9.1 million under the budgeted amount. And you can see that if you flip back through the previous pages, the department budgets there, you can see the negative amounts in that variance column to see what was under budgeted. Police Department was $3 million under budget. Fire Department was $800,000. Public Works was $2 million under budget. So just about every department was, the expenditures were under budget, except for the general government department. Now we'll flip back to the findings, unless anybody wants to talk about any of that further. Okay, looking at the findings on page 210. This is the schedule of findings and question cost. At 24 findings this year, a couple were cleared from the previous year, and then a couple were added that were new this year. So I'll just briefly run through these. The first one, 2022-1, is related to the late financial reporting caused by the release of the prior year financial report after the due date last year. That was related to the 2021 financial report being late, and of course, this one is late as well. The second finding there, -002, bank accounts, the reconciliations for the bank accounts were not done in a timely manner each month. And so until those bank accounts are reconciled, you don't know for sure whether all your activity is properly reflected in those financial reports that you're getting every month. So that's an important control to make sure everything's properly reflected.
How many banking, bank accounts do we have? Excuse me, how many bank accounts do we have?
Oh, I would guess there's 15 or 20. There's one main operating account, and then there's an accounts payable account, a payroll account, and then several other special accounts.
Is it all with just one bank, or there are multiple banks?
Primarily at one bank. There are some special trust and escrow accounts at other banks, but most of the funds are held by one bank.
Okay. Colleagues, I'm going to ask if you please write your questions down, and let him get through this, and then I'll recognize everybody for questions. Thank you. Continue, Mr. Hodges.
Sure. -003 on the next page, investment accounts, same issue there. The trust, escrow, and investment bank accounts were not being reconciled during the year, and so activity within those accounts was not being properly recorded. Number four, receivables. This relates to the water sewage and garbage receivable balances and various other receivable balances that were not reconciled to the detailed records during the year. Next page, -005, the, related to those receivable accounts, there are allowances for uncollectible, especially for water sewer and garbage, because so many people are not paying their bills on time, and so those allowances for uncollectible amounts need to be updated as the receivables are recorded. Otherwise, you're reflecting revenue that you suspect you're not going to collect. And so if your collection rate is 60%, then that 40% of your revenue needs to be recorded as uncollectible each month. Number five, or number six, grant reimbursement receivables. There were several large grants from the Department of Transportation where the reimbursement request had not been filed, and that apparently was due to overturn and, or turnover in engineering department personnel. So those reimbursements requests were filed late, and therefore, the city didn't receive the money in a timely manner. Number seven, supplies inventory. The actual inventory reports at the end of the year were not used to adjust the balances in the accounting system, and so what was in the accounting system did not agree with the actual inventory. And then during subsequent testing, we noted that subsequent supplies inventory were not being tracked after the turnover to the Jackson Water third-party management company. So you basically had inventory coming in and going out that nobody was keeping track Number eight, liabilities. This relates to the accounts payable and various other liability accounts that were not adjusted to remove payments that were made and to add new amounts that were payable during the year. Number nine, liabilities for seized and forfeited cash on the next page. This relates to the police seizures and forfeitures. As those amounts are seized or forfeited, they're put in the bank, and so the police department or the finance department, somebody's got to keep track of who that money belongs to, what case that relates to, so that when that case is settled, that money can go back where it's supposed to go or go to the city as revenue, and that's not being done. Currently, procedures are being put in place to track the current cases, but there's still old cases where the city is holding the funds but has no record of who that money goes to. Number 10, fund balances. There were some liability accounts that were being used to hold restricted amounts instead of putting it in a fund balance where it belongs. So when restricted amounts are collected, generally, those are recorded as revenue and then reflected in a restricted fund balance to keep track of those amounts and not in a liability account. Number 11, this relates to the lease agreements, tower leases as well as other leases like the stadium lease that's been so popular recently. There's not a comprehensive system in place to track those leases and the revenues from those to make sure that those are collected in a timely manner, and so it's been primarily the responsibility of the lessee to take care of their own leases and make those payments. Number 12, expenditures. You budget in various categories, capital outlay, supplies, salaries. But if you're budgeting in a category different than where you're actually recording those amounts or where they should be recorded, you're going to have a difference, and you're going to overspend your budget or underspend your budget. And this had a large effect on the capital outlay expenditures for the year. There were amounts that were posted to services and other charges that should have been capital outlay. And so posting those amounts to the correct place gives you a better feel during the year for where you are comparing the budget to actual. Otherwise, you come up to the end of the year, and you've overspent and don't even realize it. Number 13, purchasing procedures. As was the case in the prior year, there are sewer bypass pumps that were rented under emergency purchases, and they continued to be rented long after the initial emergency was over. An emergency purchase is designed to deal with an emergency situation at the time, but once you have time to step back and actually get competitive quotes or bids as whatever is required, that should be done. An emergency shouldn't be continued after the initial emergency is met. Number 14, internal service fund. The city's health benefits are paid through an internal service fund, and amounts are collected from employees or retirees as well as from other funds, because the other funds pay the city's share of those costs. And then the portion paid by those other funds has to be allocated to those other funds as expense during the year, and that was not being done. And so that's in a budgeted amount for personnel costs that was not being allocated to the appropriate funds. And so again, you had no way of knowing where you stood budget to actual, because those costs were not being allocated to the various budgets within the funds. Number 15, unclaimed funds. This relates to old outstanding payroll and other checks that were written and sent to individuals, and if those checks are not cashed or they're lost, then they remain outstanding on the city's books. And after five years, the city is required to turn those amounts over to the state as unclaimed funds. And the city still has checks dating back to 1996 that have not yet been turned over to the state as unclaimed funds. Number 16, budgeting. There were several expenditure line items that were in excess of the budget without any known exception or any exception to the requirement to meet the budget. A lot of those related to posting errors and misclassified expenditures, as I mentioned, with capital outlay. If expenses aren't posted to the correct budget line item and have to be reclassed at the end of the year, that skews your budget. Number 17, it's also related to budgeting. There were several revisions to the budget during the year, and if those revisions exceed 10% for a particular department, they have to be published so that the citizens are aware of the changes to the initial budget, and those publications were not made during the Number 18, bank accounts. The city has one primary municipal depository that holds the city funds, and they get quotes on that every two years. The quote that was given to the city was 0.41% interest, but that bank is holding about $7 million but not paying any interest on that amount. Some of the accounts, they were paying the required interest, and other accounts, they were paying nothing. And evidently, nobody is monitoring that to make sure the interest due to the city is being collected. Number 19, there was a new bank account set up with First Internet Bank, which is an out-of-state bank, and the amount held by the bank is over the FDIC-covered amount. And when that's the case, the bank is required to go through the state treasury collateral pool to designate securities as collateral for those excess funds, and this bank was not a participant in the state collateral pool. So you were exposed. If that bank had gone under, then you would have lost that money. Number 20, investments. The city can only invest in direct government investments, US Treasury bonds, and other US government securities, but some of the city's investments was money market funds, which is not an allowable investment. Number 21, personnel. When new people are hired, there's an e-verification request that's an online process through the federal government to verify that individuals are eligible to work in the United States, and that was not being consistently done. Timely pay statute. As you're all aware, the city has been delinquent in paying several vendors. The city has 45 days to pay an invoice once they receive that invoice, and if it's not done in a timely manner, then interest at a statutory rate has to be paid to that vendor. Vendor doesn't have to ask for it. It's required for the city to automatically pay that, and that was not being done. Number 23, bond covenants. As I mentioned earlier, in the Water Sewer Fund, funds coming into the Water Sewer Fund were not sufficient to pay the debt service, and so transfers had to be made to the Water Sewer Fund. But in addition to that, the Water Sewer Fund is required to set aside certain money in contingent funds and other debt reserve funds, and those set aside monies related to those bonds were not up to the required amount. And also, there's a debt coverage ratio that's required, and the Water Sewer Fund did not meet that debt coverage ratio, which basically is a ratio of income during the year compared to the debt service. Number 24, federal awards cash management. When the city receives federal money or pass through money through the state for federal grants, they have to pay the bills related to that when they receive the money. And there's a strict requirement as to how quick they have to pay that. Normally, if it's a reimbursement-type grant, they have to pay the expense beforehand, or if it's an advance payment of funds, then they have to pay that invoice within three days of receipt of that money. And that was not done in several cases. That is all of the findings.
Let's pause here for a second. Mr. Hodges, colleagues, any questions or comments regarding the findings? Yes, sir. Mr. Foot?
Mike, I got one question. This is not about the findings. Can I ask another question outside the findings?
Let's stay on the findings now, and then we'll, I'm going to try to keep this where it makes sense for Mr. Hodges, and then we'll come back, okay? We'll open up for general questions in the end, and there is a possibility we may need to go into executive session for some of that. Yes, continue. Did anybody have any question on the findings? I think they're very clear, so thank you.
And most of these are repeat findings. There were two or three that were new this year, but most of them are repeat findings.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hodges, please continue.
That's all I have, but I'm glad to answer any questions that anybody has.
All right. So we're now open for general questions about the audit. Mr. Foot?
Thank you. On, this has to do with finding, but you mentioned the fact that we didn't, weren't taking advantage of the higher interest rates on some of our bank accounts. The, do you know if that's been rectified, where they actually take action, have taken action to?
I do not know. The corrective action plan is back here as well, beginning on page 227.
Okay. What would be our average balance that would be available to earn interest on, when you've got all these different accounts all over the place, different, you know, most of them in the same bank, but obviously, a lot of different accounts? Is there a ballpark figure on what the average balance would be?
Your cash and cash equivalents at the end of the year, it's on page 17 up at the top, $147 million.
So if you earn 4% on $147 million over the course of a year, that'd be about, what's it?
Well, it's actually 0.4% is what the bank's paying.
Well, they should be paying more than that, shouldn't they?
Well, it's set every two years when you put that out for quotes from the bids from the bank, the bank's bid on how much interest they're going to pay you, and whoever offers the best deal, that's who gets your money for two years, and then it resets. You put it out for bid again.
That begs another question. Obviously, rates have changed dramatically-
Obviously, yeah.
-since 2022.
Right.
So it's been, so I'm worried about now, 2024.
Right.
So it's been two years. Is there a way to, you know, I have no idea what our current interest rate is, but if we could earn 4% on $1.47 million, I think that's about $6 million over the course of a year. That's a lot of money-
It is.
...that we may not be taking advantage of. Can we change? In other words, if rates go from 0.4 to 4%, can we go back and say we want to, you know, are we locked in at 0.4%? Can you change that?
I think we're locked in.
They're making that much money on it.
That might be a question for the legal department, but I think once you, because they're bidding on a two-year period, just like if you were going out and bidding on construction-
Okay.
-and then halfway through the project, somebody said, "Well, I'll finish the project for this amount of money, for less money." You couldn't go do that, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mallon Beckett?
Yes, so, Captain Foot, one thing that we have to do is we'll be issuing an RFP for the depository accounts. So I think to answer your question in terms of changing, depending on what's proposed, right, you know, some banks could offer a fluctuating rate, or some could offer a fixed. And so we would have to make the decision as to whether we select one that's fixed or one that's fluctuating. But obviously, the risk is when the rates are low, if it's fluctuating, right, you miss out, so.
I understand. Anyway, it's a great opportunity for us to earn some more income than we could have earned two, or three, or four, or five, or six, or seven, or eight, or nine, 10 years ago. I'm not criticizing anybody. I'm just saying, we need to make sure and take advantage of it.
So it is. If you recall, in the average cash balance, daily cash balance, was approximately $90 million. There was a proposal that was brought before this body, and you actually made comments there. And what was proposed with that rate was slightly over $2 million in earned interest, if you recall, with a proposal that was put before the body. So we'll see what the new RFP yields.
Sure. Okay. That's it. I mean, I wasn't trying to be critical of anybody. I was just pointing out, this is an opportunity for us to-
That was a great question, Mr. Foot. I appreciate you asking it. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and you mentioned, I think it's doing findings, the $7 million that the bank had. What about interest on that? Or what's a potential way to move ahead and claim a better interest?
Yeah, I'm not, that would be a legal question as well. I would assume, I mean, they bid, and the bid was accepted, so I would assume that they would need to pay that interest, because that was their proposal, to pay interest on those accounts, and they didn't pay the interest that-
For how long?
Oh, I think that's been going on for a couple of years, but, because I think that was a repeat finding.
Seven million dollars, no interest, several years.
Yeah.
That's a few lawnmowers at least.
It is. It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley.
I got another question.
I, yeah, and I have one too, Mr. Foot. Do you mind if I, I'm on chair, but-
I just-
Yeah. I just would like to know, there were some findings in here that relate to the water sewer accounts. And I would, I would like for you to just backtrack on that just a little bit and explain to us what in those findings are still relevant since we now have Jackson Water in control of water sewer.
Yeah, I think they're all relevant, because even though Jackson Water is in control, it's still city assets that are being utilized. It's still the city's water sewer system. You have a third-party manager, but that's just a manager. It's still, it's still city property, city assets, city revenue, city expenses. It's still, it's still city property, city assets, city revenue, city expenses, they're just in charge of managing that. So that's certainly a.
Wait, I'm sorry, Legal wanted to say something, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's certainly, that's certainly a legal question, but the.
No, wait, get to the mic, Mr. Williamson, thank you.
Yes, under the stipulated order, particularly, you know, after, now, there may be part of this, you know, audit that, where that revenue was our revenue, and that was, you know, that period of time when the third-party manager was collecting the revenue for us, and then we were making payments to him, but upon the entry of the, you know, that sewer stipulated order, the expenses, the revenue, all of that is the third-party manager's expenses and revenue.
Thank you.
Following the entry of that.
So that'll be reflected in the next audit process, cycle, right? Or maybe the, that'll run together.
November 22, which was after this audit period.
Well, that.
It'll be the next audit, it'll be reflected in that. Okay, be interesting audit. Thank you. All right, Mr. Hartley, thank you, Mr. Williamson.
I wasn't clear on that answer.
Wait, Mr. Hartley has a question for you.
Yeah, on that answer, what's the timeline we're looking at? Jackson Water coming on at what point?
It was November 2022, and then in October 2023, yeah, October 2023.
Okay, it's when they actually started.
Well, no, actually, November 2022 was when Jackson Water took over the water system and WSBA. And at that time, the way they operated WSBA was that they collected the funds and then, you know, remitted those to the city. And then we were, you know, pursuant to that order, we were supposed to, you know, pay a certain amount of money to the interim third-party manager. And then in October of 2023, when we entered into the sewer stipulated order, the third-party manager, interim third-party manager became responsible for everything, and became responsible for collecting the revenue and paying the expenses and all of that.
So, if you allow. Just so, none of this would reflect on the WSBA, November 2022. This is the, this is for fiscal year 2022.
Which, yeah, so, so, yeah, that, that, this would, yeah, none of this would be reflected in this audit, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's right. And so my question was really about going forward, and so it was about going forward.
That's, that's the one I understood.
Yeah, and so, so next year's audit will.
Right, right, since that was November 22, when they took over, the next year's audit, fiscal year 23, which runs October 22 through September 23, will cover the period where they took over.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, another question I've got has to do with this letter you sent out August 15th. The, it's like four or five pages, whatever, but then.
The transmittal letter, yeah.
Okay. The, it says here towards the end of the first page, "The most sensitive estimates affecting the city's financial statements were the estimated useful lives of current capital assets that are being depreciated and the estimated allowance for uncollectible receivables." Unreceivables, uncollectible receivables, that's one big issue, but the, what concerns me is, is the capital assets we've got, whether they're police cars, or police SUVs, or capital equipment for public works, and, you know, some of these big equipment, pieces of equipment, and a lot of this equipment gets used around the clock. I mean, used, used much more than a regular car, it gets used all the time. And whether the depreciation, and what we're showing, the, you know, what the value it might be based on depreciation versus reality, really what, what we've actually got in the motor pool that's actually operable. And, and the, how could we go about sort of finding where we are depreciation value versus reality of the, those capital assets that are utilized in, say, roadwork and public works, back trucks, whatever, and also all the vehicles that the police department comes? Is that, is that some, who should be responsible for looking at that and seeing if, if we're, if what we think we are, as far as capital assets, are actually in reality, the actual life we can, or use we can expect from those, that equipment?
I would think your, your property management division would be the one that would handle that. Normally, the assets, vehicles are three- to five-year life, heavy equipment might be a little bit longer, but normally, it's going to be fully depreciated by the time it gets to the inoperable state.
Okay.
So those lives are generally designed to be, to be pretty conservative.
Is the property management, is that under, under the public works? Who's, who they work for? Who's the property manager worked for in the city? What department?
It's under public works, but not, but that wouldn't be the case with JPD or J, or
fire department, but the other equipment would be for public works. But is there, is there just one property manager? Who is the property manager?
Mr. Wright, I'm going to ask you to get the mic, thank you.
We do have a central garage that's responsible for repair of vehicles on the public works side, as well as on the police department side. Now, the fire department has their own garage, and they are responsible for the equipment on the fire department side.
So who runs the, do you know who runs the garage?
Yes, we have a garage superintendent, Tony Howard.
Tony Howard, okay. I think you told me that the other day, okay.
Yeah, we mentioned that yesterday.
Thank you.
Is that your, are you done, Mr. Foot?
Yeah.
Mr. Banks? Mr. Banks? Mr. Banks, we can't hear you, you must be muted or some, well, no, you're not. We can't hear you. Can we get him? Mr. Banks, we can't hear you, are you trying to ask a question? I'm sorry, we can't hear you. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on. Mr. Banks, let us know when you, when we get our, we don't have any technical difficulties on our end, so there's something going on with you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and my question may be partially to our auditor and the, our finance department. We have a new updated personnel chart, task, okay? The recent work we've done, was any of it coordinated with our auditor? Was any of it done in consideration of some of these discrepancies? Or can we look at maybe moving away from these discrepancies with the advent of the new org chart?
Yes, Casman Hartley, that is correct. That was the purpose for needing to centralize. So most of, most of these findings have been addressed through the centralization. In fact, I think if you look at some of the responses, they do address what has been rectified.
Okay, and was any of it in coordination with our auditor, or just the report itself?
Yeah, so one is, we've relied, right, we had to do a diagnosis of the challenges we've had, and, and part of it has been a reflection in the, in the audit, in the audit report. As you've heard, these have been repeat findings, right? And so what we've done in our plan is to actually address these specific situations.
Thank you.
All right, we have, Mr. Banks is back. Mr. Banks, you want to try again? Mr. Banks? You've unmuted, but we can't hear you. Is this a problem for, on our end at all, Ms. Jordan? No?
So, he text me his question.
Okay, Mr. Banks, we're, okay. Ms. Jordan, if you'd like to just read his question, that'd be fine.
Okay, he just asked if Jackson Water is responsible for completing an audit and submitting it to the city.
They're responsible for completing an audit? Was that the question?
And submitting it to the city.
Yeah, my understanding is that's part of the, part of the order.
Legal, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, they are.
Okay, the answer is yes, Mr. Banks?
The answer is yes, it, oh, sorry. The answer is yes, it's been delayed, but the answer is yes, they are in the process of an audit that we do not yet have.
Okay, thank you. All right, colleagues, are there any other questions of Mr. Hodges today, any burning issues regarding finances? I want to remind everybody that we're reconvening the finance committee meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning, and I know we have, we'll continue our conversation with public works, I believe, planning. I wish I could hear Mr. Banks, there's, I think, maybe, was, no, IT one, one of them was.
Public Works and Planning.
Okay, so I want to remind you of that. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and first of all, I just want to ask your opinion, the new restructuring that we did, how does that look? Do you feel very comfortable with it?
I have not seen anything on the restructuring yet.
Okay. And the second question, maybe it's to Madam Chair, Vice Chair, you know, we have a lot of findings here, and perhaps we, I'm not sure, the finance committee will convene a meeting to get an update on, on the actions, because I have some questions of, of the administration, basically, in disseminating these things down to the department levels for actions. A lot of these things mention departments, and I think that, I don't know if you have any plans on convening an update meeting or not, but that would be.
That's a very good question, Mr. Hartley. In the seven months that I was finance chair, which were the seven most miserable months of my life, I was, I did convene meetings regularly to get updates on the status of those, and so I will encourage Mr. Banks to do the same, because I agree with you, that is important. And, and because we did that, we were able to fix some things. I mean, like, for example, those, you know, when we have those reports at the end of our agenda every two weeks, that we have to agree, we've all seen, or whatever, that was one of the things we were able to do that fixed, because it'd been on there perpetually. So, Mr. Banks, I know you can't respond, but I'm hoping you're hearing that. So, colleagues, is there anything else? Okay, Mr. Mallenbecker, please.
Yes, so, and this is important, because, you know, the folks that look at our reports, and who also listen in, and might not get the full picture relative to the water sewer and sanitation revenue, right? And so this statement on page 26, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and change in net position, reports sales to customers, and the number is different from what others might look at, right? When they look at the budget reports, they look at the actuals, you know, they would wonder, why is that number higher than what's reported here, right? On this report, and it's an accounting practice, this number is reported net of allowance for doubtful accounts, right? So that's why it's, it's less. And so I typically would tell folks to look at multiple reports, right, to get a fuller picture. Similarly, when you look at the operating expenses, you might wonder why that's higher than what you're looking at in the budget to actual, right? This includes depreciation expense, right? Whereas, your budget to actual would not reflect that number. And so that's important, right? I've had to take a lot of questions, you know, from reporters, from rating agencies, and so wanted to make sure everyone understands that you have to look at multiple reports.
Well, we appreciate that, Mr. Mallenbecker. So colleagues, I will see y'all at 10:00 in the morning, unless there is anything else to come before us at this time. I want to thank Mr. Hodges for his hard work on this. Quick question I do before, when are we starting on 2023? We, now, we've started now?
We just want to have a meeting with Mr. Scott and Jackson Waters' auditor, CPA, to make sure that we're.
To make sure that we start the 23 off, making sure we have all the documentation that's going to be required, so that we're not holding him up or ourselves up, being able to get the work done, because we've got a lot of the moves ready to be made, and then we'll be working with Jennifer and Barry, which is Mr. Hodges' CPAs. So we just want to make sure, we were requesting everything that we need from other departments, and we want to make sure that we have that meeting with Jackson Water, so that we're all on the same page, and we actually get everything documented correctly.
Thank you. So that, you anticipate that meeting happening?
As soon as possible.
Okay, so, because, you know, as I don't, I know you know, we're already behind, so thank you so much to all of you who have worked so hard, the finance department, each one of you I know have put in a lot of long hours on this, and Mr. Hodges, you as well, and Mr. Mallenbecker, thank you for your leadership in this department. Colleagues, anything else? If not, this meeting is adjourned.